All right, I would like to call the November Board meeting. First bar, can you take the role?
Sure. Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
All right, will you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I believe Dr. McMullin has a quick statement here before we begin.
Good evening, thank you for attending tonight's Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, our recognition, staff presentations, and community public comments feel as important that we review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. For those community members in attendance who have signed up for public comments, please come down to the podium when the board president calls your name. Out of respect for everyone in the audience, yelling, foul language, props, visuals, and addressing the audience are not permitted. In addition, per Board of Education policy, the public comments forum may not be used for political promotion or gain. Failure to adhere to these guidelines will result in the loss of future opportunities to participate in public comments. After public comments have concluded, the remainder of the meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Patrons who stay for the remainder of the meeting after public comments do so in an observatory role. Those who disrupt the meeting will be asked to leave and will lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Again, thank you for your attendance tonight, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin. Our first item on the agenda is to appoint a new clerk and deputy clerk. So can I get a motion for that?
I'd move to appoint Barbara Beam clerk and Heather Cho deputy clerk of the Board of Education for the remaining 20, 21, 22 school year.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Geary and a second by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right, and now we are on to awards and recognitions.
Good evening, I'd like to take a moment to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We have two individuals and two groups that we'd like to recognize tonight. To begin with, we'd like to start with Chant Shipley, physical education teacher at Briarwood Elementary. Chant, if you could come forward along with Principal Chris Corb and Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools, Tim Reeves. Chant was named the 2021 Wayne Osnes Award recipient by the Kansas Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. He was selected because of his leadership, significant contribution in service to the teaching profession and physical education community in the state of Kansas, among other personal and professional accomplishments. He is well-known in the district for mentoring new PE teachers as well as his innovative approach to incorporating other subjects within his lessons. He'll be honored at the convention award celebration later this fall. Congratulations to you, Chant. Next, we'd like to recognize Lindsay Duhl, fourth grade teacher at Woodland Elementary. If you could come forward along with Tim Reeves again and your principal Stacy Shipley. Lindsay was honored with the Kansas State University Cooperating Teacher Award. This recognition is awarded to a teacher who has demonstrated outstanding professional and personal influence and mentorship to Kansas State student teachers. Cooperating teachers are amazing because of their willingness to share their time, energy, and expertise with student teachers. She was honored at a ceremony in Manhattan, Kansas at the end of October. Congratulations, Lindsay. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Executive Director of Special Services, Ann Jeanette Tolman, District Health Services Director Sharon Morris, along with Tammy Collingsworth and Dr. Jennifer Tymon from the Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation. The Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation began the Legacy Grants for Student Health program with its first grants in 2018 to support healthcare initiatives within regional school districts, particularly those who serve large portions of pre- and reduced lunch populations. Last year, the grant given to our district made it possible for the Health Services Department to purchase additional AEDs for middle school athletic programs. Tonight, they're here to present a check for the 21, 22 year in the amount of $18,750, which is amazing. And this will go for health assessment equipment, asthma treatment supplies, and COVID-19 mitigation supplies. To date, they have partnered with the district for over $94,000. This grant is going to have an amazing impact on us. Thank you so much for your support of Olathe Public Schools. And finally, tonight, we'd like to recognize a very special and vital part of our Olathe Public Schools teams, our outstanding nurses. Ann Jeanette and Sharon, if you could come back up. We'd also love to have our nursing staff that's here today to come forward and be recognized. This incredible group has always taken amazing care of our students and staff, and the role has taken an even greater importance with the pandemic. Since March of 2020, our nurses have partnered with community resources to ensure students were able to learn. They've provided their medical knowledge to assist with district mitigation measures, have provided valuable information and resources to families responding to COVID-19. They've helped man vaccine clinics, they've provided COVID-19 tests, they've gathered data to support not only the district but the county and state. Moreover, our nurses continue their regular duties of acute and chronic disease management, emergency management, CPR training, facilitating vision and hearing screens, and the list goes on and on. Thank you for all you have done and continue to do for our kids. We are eternally grateful to you. Please join me one more time in thanking this great community. And that concludes our recognition.
All right, thank you, and we are going to jump into information presentations, 3.01, American Education Week 2021.
Good evening, thank you for letting me come and prep the community for this amazing week that's coming up this month. We know in November, we really focus in our community on gratitude, and the week of November 15th through 19th, we get to express our gratitude for the staff that work in the Olathe Public Schools to support our students. From our bus drivers to our cafeteria workers, to our administrative staff, to our classroom educators. So mark your calendar for November 15th through 19th. The district that we all know now was formed way back in 1965 when five smaller school districts were consolidated, and some of those districts had schools that reached back to the 1860s. So the history of education in Olathe is long. Since that time, our enrollment, since 1965, our enrollment has grown from just under 4,000 students to nearly 30,000 students. Our schools play a significant role in our community. They often provide the stability and routine and focus that our families and students need. The community, family, and school partnerships in Olathe have created a school district that is exceptional in both the state of Kansas and in the nation, as we have educators right now visiting Washington, DC to be recognized for a Blue Ribbon Award. Under the leadership of countless Board of Education members, the staff of the district has navigated a path of excellence for all of our students regardless of hardships presented. The innovation demonstrated by this district, by creating a virtual school this year, is just one example of how this district strives to meet the needs of all the students that we have in Olathe. So just a brief history of American Education Week. Concerned that 25% of our country's World War I draftees were illiterate and almost 10% were physically unfit to serve, the representatives from the National Education Association joined with the American Legion to get a focus on education in our country. And the first American Education Week was held in 1921, and that was a time for the country to really focus on the accomplishments of our public schools and the needs of our public schools, as well as partnering with the public and cooperating with the public to help them understand the accomplishments and the needs of our schools. So we've got a week of celebrating coming up, the week before Thanksgiving. Each day during the week is a different focus. There is a way to kick off the week to let the community know that we're celebrating, but during the week, we have substitute educators that are acknowledged, family partnerships, our ESPs are supported, and our educators in their classrooms. So we really want to try to celebrate all the staff that support the students in our district. Really, in Olathe, we have an amazing, amazing, creative staff, and if anyone needs specific resources for how to celebrate, those can be found on NEA.org. But I really want to think, invite you to partner with me in this month of gratitude as finding a way that we can celebrate our staff and to show their appreciation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and on to 3.02, bond presentation.
As John's headed up to the podium tonight, I just want to take a second to thank many people for their leadership on getting a bond referendum to the point where we're asking for your vote tonight. The work around a bond never stops in our district. John will explain a lot more about why, but the process and pointing forward in order to sustain the things that we're used to in our district is an ongoing process. And I want to thank John for his work on this, also Dr. McMullin, Travis Pelangi, all these people are here tonight, Matt in Technology, Maggie and her team in Communications. But the amount of work that had to happen even to get to the point a number of weeks ago where we started soliciting input is really pretty incredible. So I just, before John takes the microphone, I just wanted to take a minute to thank our team and many who I didn't mention tonight for their amazing work to get us to the point where we're ready to have this conversation tonight. So, thank you.
Great, good evening. As Dr. Geary said, later tonight in the agenda, you're going to be voting on a resolution authorizing the calling of a bond election. But I'd like to begin with a quick review of the district's history regarding bond financing. We've been doing bond issues since 1965, as Lian said, the year we consolidated. As you can see, as we've grown, so has our need for bond referendums. Historically, we go out for bonds on an average of every three years, and it's been five years since our last issue in 2016. But let me make a point of clarification that when I talk about a bond referendum or a bond election, bond referendums and elections grant the board authority to issue bonds. It doesn't mean we go out and sell the amount of the authority that you gain. Historically, our district always tries to time those bond sales, not only around the projects that are needed, but also try to time the market so that we, our overall plan of finance works out. Something that I'll discuss in a little more detail later on, but as our district's grown and changed, so has our bonding strategy. And it's a strategy that's always built on input from our patrons, exactly what are the priorities that they see in our community. But bonds have become a really integral part of funding our aging facility work and our technology initiatives, both of which our public has told us through survey work that they value immensely. As financial markets become more volatile, it's becoming increasingly important to be able to react to changing situations quickly. And in order to react, and you have to be able to sell bonds quickly, and to sell bonds quickly, you have to have authority to do that. So the authority becomes the basis for the flexibility within our plan of finance. And so for that reason, it's becoming increasingly important for districts all across the country, not just us, to have longer bond horizons, five to seven years, seven to 10 years if possible versus three to five. In doing so, districts gain that authority that they need to be flexible and complete their plan. And as a school district, we're no different. It's critical that we position ourselves with bonding authority to fund our capital improvement plan. Why? Like I said, it's become extremely necessary for the funding of several of our key initiatives, technology and aging facilities. In addition, as our growth has slowed, we are constantly trying to keep up with that next batch of kids that are coming. We were, for many, many years, had to be almost in reactionary mode, go out for shorter and commensurate time because we just didn't know how many kids were going to be coming our way. Now we can actually step back as our growth has slowed down and do a more future look at what's the exact plan that we need, even more, as I call it, a longer horizon. And to help frame our conversation tonight, let me take a second to kind of give you a 10,000-foot view of how school finance works and how bonds enter into that conversation. Like all the school districts in Kansas, we really historically have received our money and spend our money out of three main buckets. You got general fund money, that's really salaries and supplies and utilities. You have capital outlay funds that is for smaller equipment items or minor repairs and maybe some small facility needs. And then historically, we had bond dollars that built new buildings or put additions on to buildings. But in the past, most districts like us were able to rely on that capital outlay fund to do not all, but many of our larger building repairs. And most of our bond funding went to those additions and to those new buildings. But as budgets got tighter during the recession and new school financial legislation was enacted, the district started utilizing that capital outlay bucket for facility-related salaries like maintenance workers or custodial folks. In order to allocate more of that general fund to recruiting and retaining quality certified teaching staff in an ever-increasing competitive environment, especially in our county. In addition, as more and more instructional resources transitioned to being software-based versus paper-based, technology purchases became a key component as well. And with our capital funds already taxed, we began to rely on that bond, on those bond dollars for some of our larger facility repairs like roofs, HVAC replacements, major track replacements, parking lot repairs. And as you can see, the capital outlay dollars, they don't really go as far as some of our neighbors do. We're a bedroom community in Olathe. We're predominantly residential assessed valuation compared to our neighbors, and that residential assesses at a lower rate than commercial property does. So our neighbor's tax base is actually 27 to 60% larger than ours in the capital outlay realm. That's $2 to $10 million annually that we don't receive that others do. That also contributes to our dependence on bonds. And as technology devices and internet access speeds and cybersecurity and software and other technological essentials become components of just providing a quality instruction, we had to turn to bonds to provide some funding for larger-scale technology replacements. But let me be very clear about this because I know there oftentimes is confusion. We do not, it would not be a good plan of finance to sell a 20-year bond to purchase a four- or five-year life laptop. So we don't do that. It's for that reason that we match the duration of the financing to the life of that asset. So we make sure the bonds are paid off as that asset's life ends in four to five years. I should also point out that not having technology really isn't an option. I know we're becoming dependent, but you can't just say, well, let's not have it because something as simple as textbooks, the textbook companies are transitioning to more digital-based textbooks. And so to keep our students current with information, the technology is absolutely essential. So bond financing of some level is going to continue, even if we stop growing. The districts around the country are going to have to utilize that to complete larger repairs and technology. So let's turn our attention for a moment just to the process that we go through in our district. Our capital improvement plan is developed, CIP stands for Capital Improvement Plan, but for us, it also could, the C could actually stand for continuous. Because our planning begins first with public and staff input. On an ongoing basis, we receive work orders from all of our buildings needing repairs for their buildings. Some of these work orders are larger in scope, and so they get, they have to be deferred, and they get tracked in our capital improvement plan for future bonds. Mr. Pelangi and his staff are always in buildings. If they note things, it goes into the CIP. If we get a call from a patron because they've noticed something that's wrong with the building, obviously, we try to remedy it, but if it's a larger item, it goes in the CIP. So this cumulative list is consistently assessed for feasibility of the project and the timing and cost and how severe is it? And we develop the solutions and plan for funding the projects, and then the cumulative list is reviewed with building administrators at least annually. And as the list grows and the needs for the replacement cycles of things like technology or taking care of parking lots or HVAC systems grows near, our plan of finance is refined with a focus on timing the market. Is it the right time to go out or not? And at this point, more input's gathered. A list of, the list of the projects is re-reviewed with administration because you could have had different administration, different priorities in the time you've been collecting them. And inputs also gathered from the public again regarding the projects and the types of projects that we're planning on. And based on that input, we make a final recommendation regarding the size of the referendum and the duration to the Board of Education. And as you can see, a lot of work goes in the background before proposing a referendum to you, but at the end of the day, while you determine whether or not to call an election, our public will approve the plan through their vote. We track the status of past, current, future projects for each building in our CIP. Our CIP currently has 1,500 different projects that we're tracking for the future. This is just a small example, I don't expect you to be able to read it. This is Oregon Trail, the tracking of all their projects. But the type of thing that we monitor on this is multi-year visits to the building, and we use kind of a green light, yellow light, red light. Green light, red light means it's an immediate need, we have to, we have to get on that one immediately. Yellow is a three-to-five-year timeframe, and green is, it would be great to enhance, but it's working right now. That's just one example, this is actually the whole plan as we go through the whole building, excuse me, the whole district of all the items that we track. And we constantly adjust for, you know, the changing needs and the, we might complete something that comes through on a work order, or we've allocated some of our capital outlay that we do have, and that project's gone. So that's why it's a living, breathing document. And so in preparation for recommending referendum this evening, we solicited input from our public because we're to that point and get comments on our CIP, and we use several tools for that. we're to that point and get comments on our CIP. And we use several tools for that. We used three particular survey instruments this time in our work. The first is what I call the parent survey. And that was, we made our public aware of this survey that was placed on our website. We emailed, we put it out on social media, and we had great response. We got nearly 1,800 responses to that survey. But nearly all of those responses, all but eight were from parents. So hence, I call it the parent survey. The second instrument we used was one that you're more used to. It's the statistically based survey that we use through Patriot Insights where they call 400 residents, taxpayers of Olathe, 100 from each quadrant of our district, and pose questions about our projects. Ideally, it was actually very balanced between age groups. It was very balanced between people who have kids in our system, people who had kids in our system, and people who have never had kids in our system. So that's always good that when we can get that good cross-section. And the third method was the focus groups that we held last Monday at Olathe South. While we had hoped to have more turnout, we had approximately 40 people, 120 had signed up, but it still gave us some good background and deeper conversation about some of the things, that information that we received through our surveys. So as we look at the parent survey, and then we look at those major projects and project types that we solicited input for, our focus on this slide is really to look at those that were more likely to vote for something or it didn't make a difference to the decision to vote. So I've highlighted that combination of more likely to vote, and I'm indifferent to that item. And you'll see all of those items that we were polling about received at least 65% rating on acceptance of that item. We also received hundreds of comments through this parent survey, nearly 1,000 comments. That really helped us understand some of the rating of these projects and was very helpful. This all taxpayer survey, that statistical one that we typically run, listed most of the same projects, except we did this one first. And you'll notice the safety, security, and theater, music, art rooms, we added that onto our parent survey. So there wasn't data here for this particular one. But you notice, across our whole tax being public, the percentages kind of shoot up, which was, I found fairly interesting when you do, it's not just parents, when it's just residents without children as well. And you'll see the minimum there is 75% for the projects that we were soliciting input on. If you ask those same survey respondents, what's your top two? These are the top three projects that emerged from that that were first or a second choice. Number one is our playgrounds. Number two is the career tech ed spaces. Number three was service center and bus depot, which I'll talk a little more about in just a moment. When asked the level of support for a no-tax increase bond referendum, our parent survey favored projects nearly at 85%. The all taxpayer survey, as you can see, was at 78%. Interesting enough, in the all taxpayer survey, we then go on to ask, what if it were $300 million? And it only moved 1%. It went down to 77. Then when asked, what if it was 150%, it only moved one more percent to 76%. So it really said the projects that we were asking input for were important enough that it really deviate based on the total cost of all of those projects. We also take advantage to ask a few other more climate-type questions. We ask whether or not, overall, with everything you've heard about the district, what kind of grade would you give us? The parent survey gave us about a 70%, excuse me, 70% gave us an A or B. The all taxpayer survey gave, 82% gave us an A or B. And then we also asked, how about the value for your tax dollar when we do the more statistical study? And 76% gave us an A or B. If you want to include the Cs, because average and above is great, it really becomes 88, 93, and 86. So we feel that this really helps illustrate that the public's in support of the initiatives we're doing. So with all of that input, we've developed the following recommendations for this evening into four threads. First thread is our growth and reinvestment thread. And it's a $211.6 million to cover aging facility projects over those 1,500 identified items, to do renovations in our high school media centers, to do renovations in our middle school auditoriums, our preventive maintenance, the HVAC replacement cycles, the asphalt tracks and roofs, begin furniture replacement across the district, classroom furniture, conversion of our service center to a second transportation center, construction of a new service center, purchase and renovation of Lindenwood Business Center property, career tech education spaces, and replace Santa Fe Middle School, Santa Fe Trail Middle School. Let me talk specifically about a couple of these. With regards to our current service center, replacing it and converting the current one to a second bus facility, as was mentioned, we began as a district of about 3,000 students. When that service center was built, we were 10,000. We're now 30,000. We don't really have the space adequate enough to house all of the things it takes to maintain, you know, 60 buildings across our district. In building a new service center, we can actually retrofit the current facility is a perfect spot for a second bus facility. And why I say it's perfect, the need for the second bus facility is, once again, our original bus facility was built when we were smaller. We barely have room for the buses, much less the drivers' cars. We want to split part of that fleet over to this location because it's 100 yards away from the county CNG fueling station. And several months ago, you authorized an agreement where we can purchase compressed natural gas, CNG, for buses. We now have 30 of those, and we plan to expand the fleet further because it burns cleaner and the buses last longer. So that's a good synergy between those two projects. Regarding the CTE spaces, we have to do a little further study to determine, should that be a standalone facility, or should that be retrofits within our five high schools? We want to make sure that we get the programming absolutely right. So we earmark the funds that could shift to either model once that planning is complete. The second thread is technology and innovation. We allocated $60.7 million for this thread. It's the student and staff device replacements. Just like your personal computers or your phones, they don't last forever, and we have to have a replacement cycle because they wear out. This should last us about five to seven years worth of replacement cycles. We need cybersecurity upgrades. Routers need to be replaced in that timeframe, fiber network maintenance and upgrades, RLS infrastructure replacement cycles, digital classroom, that's like AV and audiovisual and those types of things, and infrastructure device replacements and upgrades. We are, as many of you know, we're the largest network in the metro area. So obviously, it takes a lot of various moving parts and replacements in order to keep that network running. Our student experience thread, we've allocated $17.8 million to, to address elementary playground upgrades, to make them more ADA compliant with new surface and curbing for those playgrounds. If you've ever been to our athletic events, you notice that our district activity centers have some pretty dimly lit parking lots. We want to switch those out to LED. Athletic facility updates and expansion, an example that would be in the baseball and softball ball realm. If you remember when we built Olathe West High School, we were very specific that we were not going to build a third DAC. We were going to try and handle five high schools in two complexes. That is putting a strain because it's getting harder and harder for sports like baseball and softball to find fields to practice and play on in addition to our facilities. So we have a couple options that we've slated in earmarked funds as we work through those various options. And finally, our safety thread of $8.2 million to address some traffic and parking issues in some of our schools, replace access control and expand access control in some of our buildings, additional outdoor cameras to cover playgrounds in our larger athletic complexes, some indoor cameras at our elementaries, and replacement of some of our long-life district radios for emergency communications. All told, that's a $298.3 million, no tax rate increase, general obligation bond referendum. We would recommend that you place it on the ballot, mail-in ballot for March 1st of 2022. With regards to the, I mentioned this plan of finance earlier, you know, we're constantly monitoring bond markets and assessed valuation, what's the impact on our tax rates. And we manage that plan and try and figure out the best timing. This is, there's a lot of little bars on this graph, but it basically summarizes the levy impact of this proposed referendum. The blue is what our actual levy has been since 89, I can't even read it, since the year 2000. The red is, if you do nothing this evening and never do another bond issue, yes, it will start clicking down. If you layer on $298 million, the yellow represents where it will be. So in essence, you extend where it currently is for about another seven years. This is conservatively built around the assumption that for the next two years, we'll grow 4.2% in assessed valuation and then drop down to 3.2. I say conservatively because over the last 10 years, we have averaged 4.9%. Over the last eight years, we've been at 6%. If you just hit 6% the first year, it kind of takes a year off of this. So we try to always show worst-case scenario of when that curve starts, how far that curve has to move out, and hope that we can pull it back. And generally, it does come back a little earlier, but then there are needs for other replacements and such. Our kind of golden rule has always been to try not to go above where it currently is. And you can kind of see back in 2013, it got, we started to pull it down. We pulled it down again in 2016. We would hope long-term, as some of our larger projects that comes off, we can allow it to click down further as well. But I want to be transparent that there will always be bond need in any school district, so it never completely goes away. A factor driving our recommendation for a longer horizon bond issue of five to seven years is the fact that we're at all-time low bond interest rates. So as we get through the supply chain issues, if we can seize those lower interest rates, if they're still there for construction, that's a very prudent thing to do. If we have large authority in our hands, if they start to rise up, we could, at a later date, we can also react quickly and avoid having to go out for additional authority, let's say in three years. That takes a year. And then finally sell them if it's on an upward slope. Another factor supporting a longer horizon is Kansas now has a bonding capacity. If, in that capacity, it's basically all the bonds paid off the prior year for school districts. All the new bonds cannot exceed that amount. Right now, there's $270 million available yet this year. You lock in after your vote. So the first 175 million goes towards that amount. So we have plenty of room to do 298. Our concern is, there's some pent-up demand. There are many bond issues being planned for 2022. What if it continues for three more years? That's why we recommend a longer horizon. We won't sell the bonds till we need them because we can't possibly take on all this work the first summer. It's going to take, this is a multi-year plan, like I said, just a much longer horizon than we're used to. Obviously, we have to communicate this plan out to our public. The first step is going to be that we'll have bond information nights at Chisholm Trail and Santa Fe Trail on the 18th and 20th at 6:30 to present details about the bond issues and answer any questions for our public. And then we'll continue to do our normal communication plan that we've done on past bond issues where we have a comprehensive website and if questions are asked, we just keep growing the frequently asked questions, video clips that will help explain the bond issue, social media campaign, press releases, English, Spanish brochures. And then we'll get out to all the community groups. I love going to the pancake breakfasts, and I've sat in a very nice lady's living room for tea once for a couple of her friends. So we'll go anywhere just to provide information to people. So as I wrap up, Dr. Yeager stole some of my thunder in thanking people. But the one that I do want to thank is all the patrons that chimed in on our surveys. It's just absolutely essential that we hear that input so we can make sure we're on the right track or reprioritize things based on their input. With that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Questions?
John, I got a quick question. Just want to follow up on something I think you just mentioned. When you look at, when you look out to the horizon and look about, you know, talk about our ability to gain authority next year, if we don't make that decision or take these steps this year, then we'll be severely limited in what we can do next year?
We believe so, just based on what Mr. AV hears sort of, is our bond advisor and Piper Sandler in traveling Kansas, he is hearing of more and more where they were waiting to get through COVID before they go. So it's not definitive that they've lined up because you kind of wait for that cap, next year's cap. They're just not ready to go now. And with that large amount there, that proves to us it'd be good to go. Otherwise, the risk, Mr. Boyd, is we tend to be the one that takes all of it, and that may not get approval. They may, when this first began, they were almost lining up on July 1 when it opened up to try and get, trying to get their place in line.
Because the state board of ed and the county also has to approve this, right?
Yes. And they will approve this as well. First, you have to be under the bond cap.
Hey, John, I had a question about the, I saw in there the 37th elementary school was considered, but it's not in the kind of final plan, are we? And this might be for Dr. Yeager as well. But how close are we to need? I mean, I know there's some schools that are getting really full, and I know what this process looks like. It's obviously very thorough. Do we have plans to, I mean, I don't know if it's boundaries or things, but have we looked into that and what some of those kind of bulging elementary schools look like potentially where we could need that?
Actually, projecting out, we see very flat in the couple schools that we believe we may need to split in the next three to five years. We believe they're seven years out. As we look at some other options for some other programs that may, that will probably free up space in some of those elementaries as well. And so we believe we are seven years out before we're splitting a school.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, John, for this. You're so thorough. One thing we didn't discuss is, I'll speak like this. One thing we didn't discuss is the Board of Tax Appeals dollars that we've enjoyed for years because we were a growing district, and then now that's falling off. So doesn't that structurally, within the school finance, make us more dependent on bonds as well?
It can. Basically, it's reducing our general fund, which means we would be reaching in the capital outlay if we could right now to put more maintenance, custodial-type salaries in there. We pretty much put all of them in there. It will be more of a strain on the general fund, but that domino, if we had a little room, I'd be putting them in there, which would make us more dependent on bond.
So it's like the pie, the way it's divided up. Our pie is constrained even more because of that. That's a better way probably to say it. And then can I say it again? This is a zero tax increase bond. So the other alternative, if it didn't pass, is we would get a tax break, and yet all of these things we just listed would not be addressed. Is that right?
That's correct.
And then when you communicate within the community, we're not advocating one way or the other, right?
No. It's an education piece.
Educating. That's great. Well, the threads that you shared are critically important. I remember 2013, our bond, we had similar threads. And we had intentionally, within our technology rollout, we had done two kids in elementary schools, two students to one device. And that was for the social emotional piece. It was strategic on our part, you know, so we wouldn't have that disconnect where everybody's face is just in the device. And then COVID hit. And so it kind of came back to bite us a little bit and with a sense of urgency, you know, it's placed an additional strain on our technology budget, hasn't it?
Yes. And just as I said, instructional resources are more and more shifting into technology delivery versus paper delivery. So whether they go home or not, every student needs one at school in order to have instruction continue.
And most of our contracts actually for instructional resources, now we pay additional money if we want bound copies of any sort of books or textbooks. It's usually written into the contract as a surplus because they actually have to set up print shops to run paper copies of books and those kinds of things. So it's actually becoming cost prohibitive most times for us to try to do that. And obviously, there's still a lot of paper books in our schools. So we, you know, we believe in the importance of that. But it becomes increasingly challenging every year as we work through different text purchases.
I remember when that was, it was just the opposite. I remember when that was, it was just the opposite.
Right, right.
And I, I'm thrilled to see that you're looking at Santa Fe Trail Middle School. And you talk about a need and talk about the most vulnerable among us right there. I put the bullseye right there. And the investment will not go to waste if our community chooses to support this. So I'm wholeheartedly voting yes on this. I'm proud of you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I may just say, because of our level of engagement this time in terms of patrons watching board meetings and, and those kinds of things versus in the past, that should a bond issue be approved by our community, all the projects and the bonds still become, come before the board as they're worked on. So, you know, everything comes in terms of bids and purchases and all those things. So as John said so many times tonight, you know, this would lock up the authority for us as a school system, should it be approved by our community. But still, everything that's involved in those dollars would come before our board for, for a vote and a question and consideration as we move forward should that happen.
Can I add one more comment? I'm just trying to find where it is, but the, the, I'm, I'm soft voiced. I'm sorry. The career tech threads, that innovation element to our curriculum, really seek community input on what their desire is. I know that education, education as a organization has a philosophy of best practices, but the beauty of local control is that we can do it the way that our citizens want.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. And moving on to 4.01, review current mitigation.
Suddenly, that technology strand in the bond seems more important.
But?
It's just user error.
It's all with love, Ron. All right.
Ready to rock and roll. Good evening. I'm here this evening to give you an update on our mitigation and talk to you just a little bit about our plan for testing and what mask proposals we have here in place for you as requested at the last meeting. So with that, I'd like to get started and just talk to you about reviewing the current mitigation measures. At the time that I submitted this presentation, we did not have the emergency authorization for students five to 11. That came through yesterday. And so I'm going to open by sharing that there's some excitement out there for some of our, our families in that they have access to vaccinations for students between the ages of five and 11. At the current time, we don't have any plans to hold vaccination clinics in the school district for that age group. But we are actively supporting the health department and the pediatricians and the pharmacies here in our area to communicate that to families if they need resources to get, get younger students vaccinated. We are still universal masking, so that's pre-K to 12. We had, continue to have our upgraded ventilation, frequent hand washing, cleaning and disinfecting surfaces, asking all individuals to stay home when they are sick. And we're continuing to contact trace quarantine and isolate. Since we began school in August, I wanted to review the COVID-19 trends, not only in our school district, but in our county. You'll see that the rate positive, the moving seven day average has decreased from nearly 10% when we began at school to 5.1% last week. I believe this week, our most recent update from Johnson County is that it's dropped even below 5%. And the trend that we see in the county is supported in our schools. So you see, we had a large number of positive student cases the week of August 20th, and that has continued to decline as the community spread has done so as well. Last week, we had 43 student cases district wide. So what we would like to propose is that beginning Monday, we would like to begin operating a test to stay practice. This would mean that students who are exposed to COVID-19 would not be required to isolate and quarantine. Rather, they would be given the option to participate in our testing, our daily testing protocol that would allow them the opportunity to return to school immediately if the tests are negative for those seven days as long as they are masking. While we are ramping up our testing with MOD, we would like to have two week window where we're monitoring what that looks like where we're all still masking. The Monday following our Thanksgiving holiday, which is November 29th, we would like to propose that we begin doing the test to stay daily with optional masks for our high school settings. All of the information that I've shared with you about the masking and the test to stay, with regard to the test to stay, it would not apply to students who would, would be able to, to show that they're fully vaccinated. So this just applies to students who are not fully vaccinated, who have an exposure where we would typically be asking them to quarantine until they could return to school without any infection. Any questions about that as I'm moving through that slide? I want to make sure.
And that applies to staff as well?
Yes.
And, and I may say too, the test to stay wouldn't be a daily, it is a daily test, but you don't have to be cleared on a daily basis to continue to go to school. And because the test takes a little bit of time, as long as you're involved in a daily test, you get to go to school. So what I mean by that is you, you don't have to go test in the morning and then wait for the phone call that says you're clear. You can go to school and then show up at school at 2 o'clock. So as long as you're taking a daily test, you can stay at school.
Sorry. Do they have to wait to get the result? And how long do we expect that it'll take?
Yes, so those are great questions. I'm going to talk just a little bit more about that when I kind of outline the testing procedures. And so thank you, Dr. Yeager, for, for kind of bringing us up to speed that that is definitely coming. So, um.
Is testing mandatory?
Is testing mandatory? It would not be mandatory, but if you chose not to test and you were not fully vaccinated, you would be asked to quarantine.
Is, is fully vaccinated the two or single Johnson, not booster or anything, right?
Right, right. Right now, it is the two shots or the single shot. However, Johnson and Johnson is not approved for younger students right now.
Thank you.
Okay, so what, what would trigger a change in what I just described to you? And we have to have some criteria in place in the event that we started to see, obviously, our community spread in our schools start to see increases or spikes in positive cases. And so there's two metrics that we would be using to monitor, and these would be by building. So if a particular building is seeing a spike, we wouldn't necessarily say that all of our high schools would need to implement masking again. It would be by building. And again, those, those metrics, there's two of them. The first is going to be the number of isolations and quarantines. So if we had a large number of students who were in the test to stay protocol and/or were not choosing to participate and were, were isolating and quarantining, if we got above 4%, then we would ask that the building go universal masking again until we were able to drop below 4% for two weeks. This would only apply to the buildings who are not universally masking, which again is our high school buildings and some of our adult support staff buildings. The Johnson County mask mandate continues to be in fact, an effect for our, our younger students in all of our early childhood settings, our elementary settings and our middle school settings. When and if it was lifted, we would continue to operate with the same protocol that we're, we're suggesting here with the criteria. So the second metric is building absenteeism. You know that oftentimes in the cold and flu season, we see buildings that have increases in absenteeism due to things like rotavirus or flu. And generally speaking, when, when the health department sees that one of our buildings is at about 10%, they ask us to take action. And so our second metric here is related to absenteeism. And if we started to see cases spike and we got above 7% of our student body and staff in a particular building gone, they were absent, then we would enact universal masking until that percentage dropped below 7% for two weeks. So either one of those metrics, the building absenteeism or what we would have as isolation and quarantines, those that are in test to stay protocol, all of that would equal the same metric right there. We would ask that we go back to universal masking.
Can you say that one more time? Did you say quarantines and those tests to stay that are in that protocol?
Yeah, so since we won't be asking students if they want to participate in the test to stay, they wouldn't be isolating and quarantining if they were not vaccinated like they do right now. If, as Mr. Boyd mentioned, you did not want to do the testing, the daily testing, you would still be asked to quarantine. So together, those metrics are what we would use for that four, that the 4%, staying under 4%. I'm happy to repeat that if that's confusing.
It's still not totally clear to me, so.
Okay. So if you have students that are in the test to stay protocol, meaning that they have been exposed to COVID, and traditionally, we would be asking them to isolate and quarantine. Or they were positive and we were asking them to isolate and quarantine. The only students that will be isolating and quarantining, should we get into this, are the, the individuals who do not want to test or are actually positive, okay? So those students, those numbers combined have to be less than 4%. Building isolations and quarantines, less than 4% or we reach a point where we're going to ask the building to universally mask again.
And if they're, if you're testing to stay, you're not in that pool, is that right?
If you're testing to, to stay, you actually are in that.
Okay, that's what I was trying to clarify. Okay, that's, okay.
And the best way to think about that is test to stay kids and staff are previously ones that we would have sent home during that time.
Okay.
So, so there's roughly, quick math, 2,000, like 80 kids, right? In a high school would have to be, do we know about where we are? I mean, I'd say there's like 43 district wide. Is that heavy, any certain?
There's 13 in high school right now?
Right, so, but again, we're right now under universal masking. So these are, these metrics are being put in place as we start to drop the masks and they become optional. It gives us some, a way to monitor what that is looking like. Just to give you an example, we kind of went back and looked at the data. I think one of our high schools would have been triggered for a two week period last year, one high school in the month of January.
And how did we get to 4%? Like was, like something recommended as far as a percentage? Or is that something we've used in the past or?
No, it, I mean, with COVID, this is all kind of brand new. And we have some neighbors that are also using the same exact metric. But more importantly, for us, this is kind of the trigger point as you start to see that slide up to four. And then we know the building absenteeism would probably fall right underneath that to seven. And then 10% is when we would be doing some considerations of do we actually close buildings for a little bit? So it kind of gives us that stair step approach.
And, and there are a couple of districts across the state who have had a gating criteria, for, for lack of a better word, earlier this year. And most of those districts have described that once they get to the five, six, seven percent positive in terms of either actually testing positive or folks quarantined and isolated, that it becomes unmanageable in terms of staff. Because anyone that's in a test to save protocol, it takes staff time and management time just to check off and be part of that and track it and make sure we're doing our due diligence that way. That, and there's been cases actually all over the United States where people have set that threshold too high and then it becomes unmanageable. And then it goes back to the, okay, the whole school needs to go home for two weeks or the whole classroom needs to go home for two weeks, that kind of thing. And so we really tried to set it in a place where we had a manageable criteria that we think, because we've not done this before, as Angie and that so well said, where we think we will be able to manage it within our current realm of possibility to keep folks in school, but also not have it be, as we heard from our nurses tonight and others in our district, you know, a, a lot of the other responsibilities that this can't take over our whole system. And so part of it is establishing a threshold that we don't believe will do that.
So to recap, should we hit one of those metrics, above 4% of isolations and quarantines or above 7% of total building absenteeism, we would universally mask at least two weeks until that metric dropped back down below what we were asked. Great questions. Anything else on that, that slide? And if you want to come back to that, we can, we can certainly do that. I'm going to move into like the testing procedures and process. And I'm really sorry, I don't know why this is, you're seeing two slides on one screen, but. So we have our agreement with MOD Pathology and we will be offering, continuing to offer that drive up site where the students that enter the test to stay protocols can access that. It's over at our Lindenwood Business Center. It is by appointment only and the school nurses will assist families in communication of what they do, how they call and, and how to get the appointment. This has been in place now for about a month. And so far, it has gone extremely well. When we've had cases that school nurses have said, you're showing symptoms of something that could look like COVID if you'd like to take advantage of this. Most oftentimes, the parents are calling even on their way out of picking their student up and getting a same day appointment. When you asked about when they get test results back, it, it certainly depends on the time that the test is administered. If it's earlier in the day, you know, say before noon, then most frequently, they're getting the test results that same day. If it's later in the afternoon or early evening, depending on what the hour is that they're taking that, it could be the next day.
Is that happening because the caseload is so low right now? And if cases begin to rise in the county again, could we see the, the wait time for the test results to increase? Or does MOD work with us exclusively and it's going to reflect what we do?
Yeah, MOD has a partnership with some, several other of our school districts here in the area. And right now, I mean, even the, I would say the last eight to 10 months, they've, if you've taken a test in the morning, they generally have had it back in the afternoon. So I'm hoping the capacity will be there. I think our, our biggest fear right now is just the numbers that may enter test to stay and what that might look like in terms of scheduling appointment and, and getting right in. So that's why we want the opportunity to build that kind of capacity here in the next couple of weeks.
Well, if the point is for us to be able to get students back into the classroom, we want to be able to do that as quickly as possible.
Most definitely. And as Dr. Yeager said, your test doesn't have to be there at 8:00 AM for you to walk into school that day as long as you show that you go and you get your test sometime during that school day and, you know, return the next day until we would know differently. When you're in that test to stay protocol, you're masking. That's a, a big piece to the procedure, so. So in order, I kind of jumped my slide here, but qualifications to participate, obviously, if you've been exposed, you are asymptomatic and, and wish to stay in school and, and, you know, go and enter the, the process, but you would be wearing your mask until that seven day window was up. And then you would go on about your way and you were, you would be taken out of the test to stay protocol. For students who are 18, under the age of 18, you have to be tested with a parent present and consent is, is needed at the time of the testing. Staff can also make the appoint, make appointments and, and access the, the drive up as well. What happens if a student returns positive during that test to stay or a staff member returns positive? They would enter what we have always done if you've tested positive for COVID, which is the isolation period and they would be asked to, to remain at home until that was over. Our testing site, as I mentioned, is at Lindenwood Business Center. That has worked out. Our testing site, as I mentioned, is at Lindenwood Business Center, that has worked out very nicely. It obviously is a site that is easily accessible to most of our families, as well as doesn't interfere with traffic flow to any of our school buildings during the day. So that partnership has gone very well. The hours of operation, it is open when we are open for school. So as we start to approach some upcoming holidays and and breaks, the MOD testing facility will not be open on those same days that our schools are closed. On the days that they are open, it is 8 to 6:30 Monday through Thursday, and 10 to 2 on Sundays. That allows students who need that test, that are in the test to stay protocol, to test on a Sunday so they can come on a Monday if need. The last thing that I wanted to point out is, while we begin to think about, you know, removing masks and going optional for for students, the one thing that has not changed is transportation. Students would still be asked to to mask to and from if they take advantage of our transportation or public transportation here in the area.
And that's a federal requirement, as you probably remember. So so if I can make a couple of other comments real quick before we go to questions, so just just to be clear, some districts have done test to stay and optional masking all at the same time. And what we've learned from other districts is that when they do both of those things together, it creates a lot of quick challenges because they're not necessarily ready for the test to stay protocol, because typically, when the masks become optional, the number of quarantines, tests will go up. And so our hope is by enacting test to stay for two weeks, that that just gives us a real solid two weeks to make sure that our processes, our procedures, and and what we're doing meets the needs of our students in our communities. So that's why we're asking for a couple of weeks to to really get that process down before we start masks being optional at the high school level on November 29th, so.
I had a question about, I don't always ask this, but CACIA-related activities, if they're in the test to stay protocol, they can still attend the sporting event, a participate, but they would have to be masked during it, like basketball? I know some of those sports coming up indoors, is that correct?
That that is my response to you right now, we haven't heard any different, anything differently, so if if something changes on that, we can let you know, but right now, that's, that's the way it's proposed.
And do the, does like, for instance, within the league and other schools, the homeschool determine what's allowed and what's not? I just want to make sure we're not putting a player at risk by sending them somewhere that they're.
Yeah, th- those are good questions. I don't know if Matt has anything he'd like to add or conversation about that, I'm looking around there, and I don't, he's here. Are you aware of conversations related to that right now, other than school districts following their own practices?
Clearly, the expectation would be to follow whatever the homeschool's guidance is if you're leaving the district, but with this type of a proposal that we are looking at, we would have to take into consideration what our expectations are with regard to an athlete who was in the test to stay. If that athlete was also then required to wear a mask during the day, they would, we would likely have them wear a mask during athletics as well. We might run into some challenges in some outside districts or outside schools, but we'd probably just work with that on a case-by-case basis. CACIA still has the expectation that while participating in athletics, you know, physical exertion and stuff, they are not requiring masks from their guidance, so it really becomes a local issue.
And and part of the important thing to remember is if the kids were home quarantined, they wouldn't be participating at all. And so, you know, certainly, we would never say you have to participate when you're a test to stay, but certainly, if a student wanted to, we would do our best not to preclude them from that opportunity.
Great, so, thank you.
Thank you for this, Ange and Ed. The, how do we know what the protocols for designating who needs to test will look like? So right now, masking, if there's a case in a classroom and there's an exposure, it's only the immediate surrounding individuals. It will that remain the same, or will it be the whole class? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so right now, we haven't been doing a lot of tracing in classrooms because we're universally masked. It's been primarily in lunchroom settings and, you know, activities. This will, this is the piece that will be a little bit more ramped up for our school nurses and our administrators, in doing their best to to identify who those students are that would be in the, or asked to move into the test to stay protocol if they so choose.
So our 4% threshold?
Mm-hmm.
Won't necessarily be impacted by an entire classroom being in test to stay protocol?
No, we would still operate with that airplane model, so just the people that were right around the student that were not six feet apart. Primarily, this would be lunchroom exposures.
Okay.
Which is primarily where we're dealing with it now.
Yes.
Really? Okay, okay. And then the masking, for example, in the Ed Center, or even like the high school coming up, that's, that would, well, the high school or the high school staff won't have to mask, but let's go to the buildings that don't have students. Can we unmask right away? Or is it going to put a issue on you? Should we wait and let you have the two weeks to try? I mean, I don't think it's going to increase, most businesses are unmasked right now, leave it optional?
We can certainly consider that. I think our goal was just, it's two weeks, and we were just gonna, that way, everybody can have the same information and know kind of what was heading their way. But I I certainly don't see why that.
That was our recommendation, just because quarantines and contact tracing takes place in these buildings, just like it does in our school buildings. Again, that would help us get some time, you know, to make sure we have the test to stay piece down. However, there's obviously no kids a lot of times in these buildings, you know, along here, so that's certainly something we could consider if you all would like to, as part of a motion tonight, if you wanted to.
Any thoughts on that, guys?
I can, you want to make a motion, or is it?
Well, let's do it. I think.
Ange is asking whether or not we want to differentiate, this is correct.
Yeah, if a, if a child K through 6 is present, then the adults can mask up.
But we would lift it immediately on the Ed Center and any other building that's primarily...
That are just adults, yeah.
Does that create a logistics problem internally? Is it, what what does it do for?
It's prob, it's probably not a huge deal, to be honest with you. I mean, the the nice thing with most of our adult facilities is people typically have their own workspace, different than a classroom where we're not sitting next to each other, working all day, that kind of thing. So I don't, I don't have major concerns about that. Part of it, to someone's point, is that we've tried to maintain some consistency, just in terms of our communication and things like that. But in terms of recommendation, if we wanted to make that start immediately for our adult-only kind of support buildings, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that.
Maybe I created this in my mind, and that's total possibility. Did I misunderstand that even in our elementary buildings, if there's no children present, that our educators can be unmasked? Did I create that? Did I invent that?
Say that one more time.
In our, in our, yeah. Like, in our elementary buildings, without students in the building, they can't be unmasked?
I would say the letter of the, of the, the order from the county health department says that. That's something that we haven't strictly enforced as a school district. Again, a lot of it is because teachers typically, when kids are in the building, are in their classrooms by themselves, same thing with our office staff, that kind of thing. So I would say, as you look across our district, regardless of the level, our staff is being very courteous of one another, and if they're coming in close contact, you know, they're masking those kinds of things while our kind of universal mask mandate is in place. And and part of that was even our follow-up with the health department after the order from the county commissioners was was voted into action, was that the intention really wasn't, if people are alone in their classrooms, they don't need to be masked up and that kind of thing, so. I, does that answer your question?
It did.
Kind of is? Okay.
And I did create it.
The, the other thing that I don't want to get lost in our conversation tonight is, we're talking about high school tonight, but if you go back to the matrix that Ange and Ed shared, our, our proposal would be, as soon as the county health order would drop, would drop, go away, whatever words you want to use, that we would use the same protocol in all our other buildings, so we'd have that set up, ready to go. The thing that I think is important, and we heard this from our community a lot even last year, is let's really look at what our numbers are in our district. And one of the things I'm really proud of, it's Ange and Ed and Sharon and the team that worked on this, is really the ability to do this by, by school. So it's not the whole district as we come up with this matrix and work for it that way.
Is, is the test and stay 912, or K?
That's a great question, Mr. Gary, and and we definitely want to make sure that our community knows that the test to stay will be, we will put that in in effect for all students.
Pre-K, well, okay, good, that's what I was, okay.
Great question.
Yep.
Very good question. And then as we have more data, we can always adjust the percentages. I mean, if we've got them too low, we'll know, if it's too high, we'll know, we'll revisit that.
Absolutely.
Oh, about visitors and spectators?
So that's also a very good question, Mr. Beveridge. I would say that in the high school, it it depends on which setting you're entering. If you're entering our buildings that are K-8, you would still be requested to wear a mask if you entered 912 optional. And and then that, depending on where your athletic event was, that's the way it would look.
We would.
Just mirror the school, whichever school you're going to.
Yes.
Are we getting any feedback from the county on their willingness to revisit the mask mandate for K through 12?
Not from the county that I have had any conversation about.
So I would say there hasn't been a lot of conversation from the county regarding that. I do think the news last night, in terms of the emergency authorization for our young students, will likely perpetuate a conversation happening with the county in terms of what do we need to look at, you know, in order for our other students to become optional as well? You know, just based on the conversation that was obviously part of the, the meeting the Board of County Commissioners had much, several months ago, you know, that was one of the things that was articulated, that, you know, once the vaccine is available for younger people in our county, that that would likely, at least, per, you know, create the need for a conversation. So we don't have anything official from Johnson County Department of Health and Environment or or anything, or anything unofficial, for that matter, actually. But I I suspect that it won't be long until we'll have to have those kinds of conversations to figure out where where we are with that.
One more question. Can you get a test anywhere else? And have it, like, if a doctor was going to do a test?
Yes, as long as it's a PCR test, we would take that in any of those seven days that you were in the protocol.
I don't have a question. I would like to thank Ange and Ed for, and her team for this work, you know, at the Board's request, you know, last month, and they were so responsive, and I think their approach and their plan is is balanced, and we appreciate you guys' work.
Thank you. Thanks to Sharon and her team and all the nurses who are working with these cases and our students as well.
Is, what does communication look like with this? Like, if we pass this, like, is this something that, I mean, we're, we're going to start this Monday? Obviously, we want to make as many people aware of this, and I'm sure there's millions watching at home.
We, we will begin communication tomorrow, and everything, if it's approved, will be public, and it'll be on the website, will also be communicated by building. So we'll, we'll have as much communication as possible following tonight's.
So I always send our staff an update after all the board meetings, so I, if if it would move forward tonight, I'll include some information about it in my update to our staff, all of our staff yet tonight. And then Maggie and her team have been working on communication that we would send to all of our parents and have up on the web and things, first thing tomorrow morning, I think. Yeah, so we're, we're ready to go with that piece of it.
Yeah, I think the more we can do something that is like a graphic, that shows if then, that is very easy to follow what happens if you're in this category, or if you're in another category, is going to be very helpful, as opposed to something that's text-intensive to explain.
Sure.
Thank you.
We can do that.
So I would, I would love to add one little amendment to the motion that's been proposed. Beginning 9 through 12, for grades 9 through 12, would be Monday, the 29th, again, giving you the, the ramp up for, and we've got Thanksgiving right in there, too, so it's, it's a break, and you hit on a Monday for 9 through 12. And then immediately, for any building without a K through 6 grade child, when they're not present, that the adults can unmask. Or anyone for that, anyone 9 through 12 also. We could wordsmith that much better, but you know the intent is that unmasking adults.
Really, it may just be adding effective immediately, all support buildings, masks would be optional.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you like to make that motion then with?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Or Dr. Jaeger's language at the end there?
Yeah, you want me to try it? I'll wing it here, guys. Okay, I move to approve the district recommendation to begin testing to stay on Monday, November the 8th, 2021, and to utilize the district gating criteria of optional masking for grades 9 through 12, beginning on November 29th, 2021, and immediately allow optional masking for any building when a K through 6 child is not present. And that the same gating criteria to be applied to all district's buildings at the conclusion of the current Johnson County Health mandate requiring masks in elementary and middle schools.
Second.
Do you have that bar?
Barb, first time around.
Yeah, got it all. I can.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
I'm taking mine off.
All right. Next to public comments. So Brian, can you read the?
Sorry. Yeah, I forgot one. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
All right. We, you got it? Okay. All right, first speaker is Brian Connell.
I have something to say. Wrote it. But I'm gonna start with something else. I do not agree with this test-to-stay plan as it is set. Two things. Looking the OSD's website right this minute, it doesn't say 43, it says 37 positive cases as of the 27th. N炊 accuracy in the presentation. Second thing, we're offer, offering a 4% when the county uses a 5%. It's an arbitrary number. To copy and do it, decide to release, and do it, doesn't make sense. We are the leaders, we should be identifying what is the standard and leading from that perspective. I'm glad I'm have, I'm taking my mask off, because my very first question was, hey, can we take my mask off? So thank you for at least that. So I'm gonna go into my prepared conversations. Parents need mask optional. This protocol of choosing to continue to mask our children, even our middle school kids, even though they are not under the mandate, makes no sense. I don't agree with it. But apparently, some people do. We're at a crossroads in this district right now, and we have a huge opportunity, we can't fumble. Our entire community is engaged at a level unseen in the 15 years I've been here. Record voter turnout this week, with the schools at the center of all those issues. And this isn't just Alatha or Johnson County, it is nationwide. Parents want a seat at a table, in their schools, in the educational journey of their children. I have been speaking for 18 months, 16 months now, the kids have to be first in everything we do in this district. And I will be happy and excited to continue my advocacy from here going forward as well. We do have a great school district, great teachers and staff, and we have amazing kids. Way, way too many of them are super stressed right now. Every kid that I know is in counseling somewhere, and if they're not, they probably ought to be, because what we've been doing for the last two years is not making them better. Same with our teachers and our staff. That stress is making it hard to keep them and hire them. We need to address all of this immediately. The cascade of consequences is so great that it may get to the point it's irreparable. And you all know, I spoke exactly a year ago about the suicides in my high school, 11 kids committed suicide. The cascading effect... The cascading effect of mental pain for our school district needs to be addressed before it gets really bad. And the anger and the hate and the darkness has, you know, needs to be abated. We have to focus on the kids. We also then have to focus on the teachers and staff to retain the greatness of our teachers. I'm gonna always emphasize people before process. People before our technology. People before our buildings. People before programs and systems. We have to listen. We have to engage. Three times more people voted this week than did in the last three different elections. They're engaged. We owe it to them to listen. For those that are watching, these seven are to represent all of us. They cannot make all the decisions in a vacuum. They need us engaged. And I will encourage and advise that the board and the superintendents include a parent advisory group to be initiated immediately in January, if not sooner. You all need to be engaged. Our superintendents need to be engaged. But I will remind everybody, please, if you have problems in your classrooms, go to the teacher first, then the principal, then up the board. Dr. Jaeger cannot do 5,000 emails every week. It's not appropriate. And these folks can't fix the little micro problems that happen in our classrooms.
Mr. Connell, are you addressing the board or are you addressing the public?
You represent the public, so I'm representing all of the public and talking to you as the board, as the representatives of the public. Is that clear?
Mr. Mc, Dr. McMullin, do we have a policy where a speaker is supposed to address the board?
You represent the board, and I'm gonna ask for my 30 seconds back. You, the board, represent the public. The public that you're not engaging. So I'm asking you and the public to pay attention to that engagement. I have every right. And I'm gonna take my last 30 seconds.
Please follow the protocols.
Yes, ma'am.
Please show respect to the individuals who have created protocols and asked you to abide by them.
Please stay engaged, continue to reach out to everyone. We have a whole student educational journey we must address. Academics, scholastic, mental, emotional, psychological, social, relationships, physical, extracurricular. You all have an obligation to the entire community to put the kids first, parents and teachers second, and engage everybody. Thank you.
Good evening. I was unaware that you guys were gonna be talking about COVID prior to our speeches, so I have a whole bunch of notes that I just put together and just kind of scratched a couple things. So hopefully, this all makes sense. I'm mother of three and a Lath resident of eight years, born and raised in Johnson County. My oldest is in first grade, and my middle kiddo is a peer model, in the peer model program here in the district. First and foremost, I want to come and just thank you quickly to Lieta for pushing this up and making this a decision and a speaking topic tonight. Last month, you stated if the Health Department didn't articulate a framework for COVID, that the board would have to come up with something. So thank you for taking responsibility and making this an actual conversation tonight. I appreciate that more than you know. Coming to talk to you guys again about COVID protocol, seeing how there's been no answers before tonight, and we were just pawning it off on Johnson County Health Department. Again, I appreciate the conversation tonight. You keep saying that we need to keep kids in school, yet until this, whatever you're calling it, test-to-stay per vium, we're still quarantining healthy kids, which needs to stop. In the presentation tonight, the kids were, or we were told that if kids were fully vaccinated, that they don't have to test or quarantine. And I need to remind everybody that even if you're vaccinated, you can still get and give COVID. I think that for whatever reason that has been miscommunicated, you can still get it. And for a district that wants to embrace inclusivity and diversity, let's not discriminate against the kids who don't get vaccinated, especially with this going down now to 5 to 11 years of age. There are going to be parents that make the choice not to vaccinate these kids against this vaccine or against this COVID. So we cannot discriminate. We've never asked for a vaccination proof of the flu. We've never asked for any of the other random viruses that show up. We do have a vaccine list, and we do have medical and religious exemptions here in the state of Kansas. So if we're gonna go down that route of vaccine mandates, we need to make sure that we do not discriminate against anybody. I agree with all of that 100% in regards to making the board come up with an agreement. Everything seems to get spawned off on the Health Department, and the board gets to bypass another month of not worrying about making anything go forward. But tonight was a different story, so I appreciate that. I know you guys are probably sick of hearing and talking about COVID, but we won't quit coming to you guys and talking to you about it and removing the masks until our kids are allowed to live normal lives again and we get our freedom of choice back. Let's stop showing graphs and scary numbers like we did last month and just pull the district COVID dashboard and show what the draft numbers are. And in that presentation that was just given, it was told that there were 43 cases right now, which was actually two weeks ago. That is not correct information. We have 37 cases as of the week of the 22nd of October through the 28th, and those will also get updated tomorrow. Mind you, within Olathe's student count of 29,794 children, that brings the COVID cases in Olathe's school district to less than .0017%. So us talking about 5% in Johnson County is great, but Olathe's school district, which we are all here to talk about tonight, is .0013. Keep in mind, Spring Hill has, as of this week, zero positive cases and two staff only that were under, and they were under 10 cases every single week in both students and staff since September 17th. They have 4,017 students this year, which is a total of zero student cases, 0% student cases. And they are looking to move to optional masking at semester, which are currently allowing parental exemptions. You wanted the numbers to go down, and in the month of October, we have seen the lowest number of COVID cases in the Olathe's school district, week after week. We did our part, now it's time for the board to do theirs. I'm not here to say 100% mask or no mask. I'm here to say it should be optional and a choice. I believe there will always be people that feel safer in masks. And for that, that is their choice and not one that should be mandated. It should not cost family a ton of money to go get a medical mask exemption for their kids. We need to follow suit as the Spring Hill School District and do parental mask exemptions or just go mask optional completely. It's time to make the health decisions go back to the parents, like, unlike they were able to do 20 months ago, or like they were able to do 20 months ago. For whatever reason, the last 20 months, the parents' choices have gone out the window. The parents are fed up, and I think we are seeing that in the proof of numbers at the election this week. So let's turn the boat around and get what we are here for. Kids to be in school without masks if they choose, be happy and thriving in learning education, and not worrying about all the other junk that's being thrown around in schools right now. Thank you.
Can I clarify something real quick? The data that was published on Friday for Board Docs for transparency, these were the latest numbers that were available. So Mrs. Tallman had what we had at the time, so there has been a release of more current numbers. This is not an error, it just is what was published. And then once you publish it, you can't really amend it without a bunch of rigmarole. So Anjanet, thank you for this. It was not an error, it just was timing. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. Brett McCall.
Hello. Brett McCall, head basketball coach, social studies teacher, father of six girls. I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of change on here after listening to that. A lot that I'm gonna take out. Thank you for the work over the last month. That was my big issue last month of where are we going and what's gonna happen. For the past 20 months, people have controlled my life and my kids. And as a father, I'm supposed to make the best decisions that I feel fit for my children. In that case, those are six young girls ages 14 to 2. My six girls can go anywhere without a mask. But heaven forbid, they would go into a school and have to put one on. I believe the message that's being sent is that schools are unsafe. My daughters go to youth group every Wednesday at their church with hundreds of kids in the classroom, in the gymnasium, but they can't go to school. And everything that's been forced on us, it was two weeks to flatten the curve. Then it was, hey, it's just the rest of the school year. That was a year and a half ago. Then it was last fall, well, it's only remote. It's only large gatherings. It's only sports. It's only church. It's only concerts. But then, it's just a mask. It's just a vaccine. But then, when you get the vaccine, everything's gonna be better. But then August comes around and you put the mask back on. Decisions that I was never able to make for any of my six daughters. Yet elementary schools go to Skate City and have parties and don't wear a mask, but they come back and go to elementary school and put a mask on. My daughter's volleyball team played Spring Hill at Olathe Northwest. The Olathe parents all had a mask on, sitting next to Spring Hill parents without masks. I saw an 80-year-old and his wife sitting right next to me without a mask from Spring Hill. My dad subbed in Mill Valley. My dad was an educator for over 50 years. My dad is 74. He subbed in Mill Valley last week. I know I sent you guys an email, excuse me, two weeks ago. He actually happened to sub on that Wednesday after they changed to mask optional. And I know I sent you the data. He had 72 students the very next day. They got rid of masks. 13 of the 72 wore a mask. When you look at the data, parents don't want to mask their kids. And if they want to, great. That's never been a problem. You want to wear a mask your whole life, that's completely fine. But I just have problems when I'm in a certain building, I get told this, but then I go to another event and I just don't get it. Lastly, on the quarantines. Unfortunately, my eight-year-old was quarantined two weeks ago. My six-year-old was quarantined last year, last week because of possible exposure. I had two kids sitting at home completely healthy. And I like the way we're going, but there needs to be more. I don't agree with everything that's been proposed. There needs to be more. What about kids that are mask-exempt? Do they have to wear a mask when they return? When they're going through the protocol? Because my three elementary kids are mask-exempt. So will they have to wear a mask and go against doctors' orders if they're on the return-to-mask policy or whatever it was called? That's an interesting question. I don't know if we talked about that. But I agree, I think we should have the mask-exempt parents being able to opt out like Spring Hill. Kansas City Star wanted to run crazy stories about Spring Hill at the beginning. Oh, this district's making mask optional, they want to run all these stories. You heard any stories about how Spring Hill and their numbers? Anybody talking about that? When it comes to this, and I've said it now for 20 months, you guys, you want best what's for your kids, I want best what for my kids. Just let us choose. And it was great to see record turnouts at the voting, because a lot of people care, a lot of people are passionate. It's been 20 months, so let's go. And lastly, I want to say, Brian, I want to say thank you for everything that you have done for the Olathe School Board, and I wish you the best of luck. So thank you. Thank you, guys.
Brian Campbell. Eric Pierinton?
I want to start off by just thanking the board for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I do think these meetings should be moved to a larger district venue when there is a high demand from the public we've seen earlier this year. I think we have space if we could do that. I think it'd give people more, more people to get, voice their opinion and feel maybe better about the situation if more people could speak during the high-demand times. Also, I want to thank the board for their unpaid public service. I'm sure there are a lot of reasons why many of these BOE elections, races before went unopposed. I'm not sure we'll see that again, but it's a big-time commitment. You have to make a lot of tough decisions regarding some emotionally charged situations. And for that, I do thank you for serving the community. I also want to thank the community, the board, and all the staff that helped us invest in the upkeep and plumbing this at the facilities. In the past, we've held events like summer conferences at Olathe North, for example. We would have educators from outside the area visit our schools. Many of the guests would comment how impressed they were about how well-maintained and how clean older buildings like Olathe North is. And that's just a big, you know, compliment to everybody involved in the maintenance and the investment and the custodial staff to just keep our buildings up. We have some older buildings, you just get the sense that other areas are not as fortunate. And the district somewhat recently launched a dual-language immersion program where kindergartners and first graders at two schools spend much of their day learning Spanish and learning in Spanish. It's really amazing to see that program in action. And I want to thank the people involved in that, Michael Funthrope, probably butchered his name, and everyone else involved in that effort. I would love to see that program rapidly expanded as being bilingual will give those students a huge advantage for the rest of their life, not just in their careers, but also in their personal life, being able to connect with more people in different communities. Critical race theory has been a hot topic of discussion lately. Yes, CRT is a college-level coursework, and no, it's not found in our K-12 curriculum. There have been things that are not part of the curriculum, though, that do make it into our schools. Recently, there was a worksheet handed out to some students that was not part of our curriculum, but it made it into our schools. I appreciate at least one board member addressing that worksheet publicly for parents to read as we saw it make national headlines. So I ask that we please do not dismiss parents' concerns by simply saying that it's not in the curriculum, because it could still be in our schools. And yes, we as a society have plenty of work to do in that arena, especially within the criminal justice system, as CRT touches on a lot. Anything that tells people that they are either the oppressor or the oppressed based solely on a superficial characteristic outside of their control is garbage. We should all openly agree that that is the case, and that's not a controversial take. With that said, I'd also like to encourage everyone in the community to please give our Diversity and Engagement Department the benefit of the doubt. Erica Razzo, Markeith, Markeith Harris, and the rest of the department are doing great work to help ensure our schools are inclusive and celebrate our diversity. They and many others do a great job of helping all of our students to know that they are welcome in our community. Diversity is a strength. It is our individual varying experiences and ideas that make diversity great. We do not want to be a monolithic block stuck in group think, no matter what that line of thinking may be. A diversity of ideas is critical for the advancement of society. Onto COVID. I have a lot of snos in there that may not be relevant now. And I do appreciate the action the board took tonight to, you know, make progress in getting back to earlier times. About 20% of Spring Hill K-38 students have mask exemptions signed by just their parents, effectively making their entire district mask optional. Their high school is already mask optional to start the year. They were recently cited in the news, in a news article as having the lowest or one of the lowest positivity rates in Johnson County school districts. Some of the numbers from perspective, Spring Hill has about 4,000 students. In the last five weeks, eight students tested positive for COVID. 4,000 divided by eight is 500. That means a large elementary school in a Lath, like a Manchester Park or Clearwater with 500 students or so. In the last five weeks during this Delta wave of COVID, only one would have, we'd only have one COVID case there. Our district recorded 37 new COVID cases for students, and lower than any time in the first seven weeks. New COVID cases for all staff, we're just seven this week, time-record low. The first week of school, we had 37 staff cases, now we just have seven. I just encourage everyone to view the dashboard on the county's website yourself to see the raw data. It's a really good dashboard. The Mid-America Regional Council also has a great dashboard for the metro numbers. And the positivity rate was 4.6 as of today. On the county's website, it was 4.5 July 7th when we did open, when we did enrollment under, you know, mask option. Thank you.
All right, and that concludes public comments. Now, we're gonna go out of order a little bit and do executive session right now. So can I get a motion from someone?
I move to that the board adjourned an executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney to discuss legal issues for the body or agency pursuant to the exception for matters which would deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma. And that the board returned to the regular meeting at? 8:05 PM in this room.
Second. Second, or motion by Mr. Geary, second by Mr. Boyd?
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Yes.
I move the Board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney to discuss legal issues for the body or agency pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship under coma and that the Board return to the regular meeting at?
8:16.
8:16 in this room.
Second.
So, that would be Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Do we have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion for all eight of those items.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered 7.01 through 7.08 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd. Thank you by Mr. Gary.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right. And action bid contracts agreements 1.0 or 8.01 to 8.07. Any questions from anyone on those? If not, I prefer we want that together.
I move to approve action bids contracts agreements 8.01 through 8.07 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Schultz. Thank you by Ms. Felter. Is that okay?
Mr. Average?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right. And action other 9.01 resolution authorizing and calling of a bond election. Can I get a motion for that if there's no more questions or anything regarding that?
I'd make the motion. I just need to know what we know the dollar number that we want to?
298.
298 even?
No.
I don't think it was 298 even. Mr. Hutchinson? Is there a little extra in there?
Yeah.
Just so we get the number right.
Leave 298.3, but let me double check that.
298.3 million.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing and providing for the calling of a bond election in Unified School District Number 233 Johnson County, Kansas, Olatha for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the district the question of issuing general obligation bonds of the district in the amount of 298,300,000, authorizing the application to the State Board of Education or the authority to call said bond election and for capital improvement state aid and providing for the giving of notice of said bond election.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary. Thank you by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mr. Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes. All right. We have future action items 10.01, 10.14, and then we also have in our packets written information, October Head Start Director's Report. And on to Board comments.
Can I say that the Head Start Director's Report, the average daily attendance is 88% in the midst of a pandemic with all those dynamics that's stellar, I think. So, good job, Head Start.
All right. Any other Board comments?
I actually had some comments, but I didn't want to jump the line. So, anybody else can go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think you started.
I was back on the Head Start report. Barb, welcome to the team. Guys, we have the new Board Clerk. We will miss Joy, but welcome, Barb. We're excited you're here. Thank you. She's great. If you have any questions, we are always available.
Thank you.
And then I wanted to ask Brent about, can you talk a little bit, and I gave you a heads up, that I was going to ask about the substitute situation in the district and how we're doing. And specifically, I wanted to know about when we are unable to fill a void, especially at the elementary school and then a class is, if you'll talk about how that happens and when it's divided and split amongst other teachers, what's the protocol and do those teachers get a stipend for that?
Yeah. You know, I thought LaShaw was going to jump up for that part, but I see Tim popping. Yeah, so Tim's going to help us there. So, as we get started with Tim answering that question, one of the things that I would like to say real quickly is our HR division has been working like nobody's business to try to get subs prepared for our classrooms. Just in the last two weeks, I've walked by this room a lot and just walked through whatever meeting's taking place and interrupt whatever meeting's taking place. But twice in the last couple of weeks, there's been a room full of new substitutes to our district going through orientation and those things. And both groups were over 30 people. And so, I just want to commend our HR team for continuing to work really, really hard to get substitutes in place for our schools. But Tim could probably talk a little bit about when they don't fill and how we work through those processes.
And so, can I have you ask one more time just to make sure I have the right?
So, specifically the elementary, but I'm sure it applies to middle school and high school. When you are unable to fill a need, you know, it wasn't planned, someone's sick or all of a sudden unquarantined, how is that handled? And then if a teacher has to, you know, step up and help, are they compensated?
So, their buildings have multiple plans. In some cases, buildings have specialists who have time beyond their negotiated agreement, plan time. And so, they have scheduled together for those folks to help cover. If that's not an option and they sometimes have to take kids and divide them out into other classes, they'll do that. So, if it's a sub job that's unfilled, that daily rate can then be used to stipend those teachers that come. So, if it is a teacher that picks up because they have extra time in their schedule, they don't get that unless they give up their planned time. So, if a teacher were to, or any teacher were to teach through their planned time, they would get compensated for that. But then they also use that sub rate for classroom teachers as well.
Let me make sure I understand. So, for them, if they cover that, they split the class and you have 10 extra kids, they also, in order to get the sub rate, they have to give up their planned time? Is that what you said?
For specials, if specials have time beyond their day, they can be, they can be assigned to cover class. But the daily rate for subs can be used to compensate teachers for teacher cover. I think it's called teacher cover teacher. Does that?
Does that sound right?
Teacher, teacher cover teacher, I believe.
How do they file for that compensation? Is it automatically done or is there a process?
I believe we use the wage back system to do it now.
That's correct. Yeah. So, if a teacher would give up their time to cover a class, so a couple of things that can happen. So, if a teacher would give up their planned time, as Tim is saying, to cover a class for another teacher, they would get paid whatever that chunk of time is worth since they wouldn't be getting their planned time. If teachers, I believe this is right, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but if a fourth grade position doesn't fill, for example, we split those kids between two classes, both of those teachers would receive half of that daily sub rate to have those additional kids in their class. That makes sense?
Yeah.
The daily rate that can be used to kind of divide out among the teachers that pay.
And their principal initiates the pay addition or the process or the teacher does?
In my building, the teacher initiated it. My.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I want to make sure they're compensated because it incentivizes us to make sure there's coverage. The ultimate need is that the kids are getting taught and it's not just a let's get by Band-Aid. And I mean, I heard this week from some elementary teachers, and if anybody knows elementary teachers, they're go along, get along, we're going to make a difference and plug in. And I never want to take advantage of that. So, I know there is a shortage. And they also communicated a willingness to plug in. They want it to be minimal. And then, but if they are plugging in, can we be strategic and not just reactive and make sure they're getting at least breaks, you know, throughout the day? Because it's a lot when there's. day, because it's a lot when there's 30 kids all of a sudden.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And our goal always is to compensate teachers that are stepping up to help with that, and as you said, our staff is so abundantly willing to do that, but, you know, when we don't have a sub job fill, it does put a strain on oftentimes many people within a school, and so whenever we, you know, can by the negotiated agreement compensate a staff member for doing that, it's important that we do. So, you know, I think in terms of your question to Tim about what's the process that our buildings are utilizing to make sure that happens, it's probably a good time for us to be clear about what the process is in each building, so everyone knows, because we're, if we're not paying the substitute to be there, we should be paying our own staff that's helping cover it, cover those times, so.
Thank you, and the easier we can make it on the staff, and I know, I'm not saying load all the buildings up, the administrative team, but the better, because, you know, they're covering kids that were unanticipated, and even just the dynamics of having all of a sudden 10 more kids in your classroom, especially during COVID, and then you have copies for year 20, you can't leave the room and copy for more. So if we can make sure we have the supports they need, and it's important for teacher morale, and it's important for educational outcomes, so thank you for answering that. Thanks for letting me put you on the spot.
Yeah, I would just say too, that, you know, it just reiterates the importance of our labor market in just about every way possible right now. You know, Dr. Seig could give us numbers, but, you know, our overall fill rates continue to be higher than most of our neighbors, not that that's something to brag about, because they're not great, you know, and it really does, as you said, impact our teachers on a daily basis, and, you know, trying to support each other and meeting the needs of kids and that. So I'd be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to once again say, if anyone's interested in subbing for us, one day a week, one day a month, three days a month, we would love to have you, and we would really appreciate your support of our system in that way, so.
Amen to that. Can I add one more statement, and this, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not the board, but I wouldn't be surprised if others agree, but the NSBA letter that was released, it was in September on the 29th, and unfortunately, I didn't really, it went under my radar, but it, I'm not going to read it, I don't want to inflame anger, but it asked for federal intervention, and kind of, in my opinion, painted parents, or anybody speaking up with their opinion, as terrorists or a risk for districts. That letter, it accuses essentially outspoken parents who oppose things like mandates as terrorists, and I believe it was an attempt to silence parents. And in Olathe, we have a long history of, you just witnessed, public comments, we have a long history of involving parents, seeking their input, and I don't believe it's reflective of our belief. So the NSBA does not speak for me. I oppose the letter. I impose, I oppose federal involvement in local school board meetings and the business of our district beyond what they already are involved. I don't know if you guys realize, they, the mandates from the feds are about 40% of our budget, at least, that's a skinny number, and they pay 6% of the budget. So we do not want federal involvement. I'm an advocate for local control. We've benefited from that. You've seen the nuances of local control tonight, us being able to adapt as we need. And so I oppose the use of taxpayer money by special interest groups like NSBA to tell the federal government that parents are the enemy and are terrorists. An apology letter, so the original letter was September 29th, an apology letter was issued on 10/22, and it said, it was sorry for the language of the letter, and stated that there should have been better process in place to allow for consultation on a communication of this significance, but NSBA never retracted or rescinded their request for federal involvement in our school districts. We, by default, are members of NSBA because we are members of KASB. On this, KASB was silent, and I have enjoyed my training and our seminars from both NSBA and KASB. I believe they did us no favors, just sitting silent during this time. So what I would like to ask of us as a district is to make sure, before we renew our contract with KASB, which is in March, about $27,000 a year we spend, and don't get me wrong, we benefit greatly from KASB. They do training, we get collective cost abatements, I'll say that, we get legal advice that is more valuable than the $27,000, but to associate with an organization that would sit by and allow NSBA to paint parents who are involved in productive dialogue is unacceptable to me. I want to know what corrective action is taking place, and what policy changes are being made to make sure that leaders within an organization cannot just write a letter to this magnitude without at least board approval of some sort. And so that's March, and KASB, I want to hear from you, that you are on this, and that you are going to earn our full faith and trust back. And that's all I have.
So did you have a motion in there?
No, that's my comment. That's my comment.
So Ms. Felter, I do want to correct something. The KASB did comment on that.
What did they?
I'm trying to find it now, I didn't know that you were going to...
It was after the letter of apology was issued.
I don't know the time or date. I wish you would have mentioned something before you said that, because the KASB did comment. The person who didn't comment was Mark Tolman, who's the executive director, and it wouldn't be appropriate for the executive director of Legislative Affairs to comment, but that's not John Heine, that's not Lori Blake.
I'm just saying...
And I wish that before you threw them under the bus tonight, you would have let me know, because they did comment.
Did you notice that I am, I'm speaking for myself, and I'm saying, there's no motion here, but I'm saying I have enjoyed a long history with KASB, but this was unacceptable, and I believe...
Have you contacted KASB?
Yeah, I was going to ask that. No, but I plan to. I plan to. So that's my comment.
I would have appreciated you contact Dr. Heine.
That's fine. I've been monitoring and reading all of their emails.
This is what we have problems with.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, Mr. Beveridge, I struggle, and I don't think it's appropriate for a board member sitting in an official meeting to speak from his dius, and then say they're speaking for themselves. How does that mesh?
Well, I think these are all our personal comments. It's my understanding. Any other comments?
I was going to mention, totally changing a little bit, we had the mini, the regional CACIA board meetings, and I was just going to mention how proud I was, I mean, I'll have to name, but of our athletic directors and our principals of our high schools that took part in the, in their leadership with, I mean, it's just so great to see so many great leaders in our community, up in front of, I mean, just outside of our community all in one place, and they did a great job of leading through some very tough discussions that we had, and so, and Mr. Johnson was there and others, but it was, again, very tough discussions that were being had about some very big things, and our district leadership was on full shine mode at that point, so I appreciate that. That's all I have.
All right. I was just going to note the Public School Foundation breakfast tomorrow, and if you don't have tickets, there is a way to watch online, and I think they'll, they said they checked here, they'll have it on their homepage tomorrow morning at 7:00, so if you're all interested, it's always a good time. All right, Dr. Jaeger.
All right, thank you. It has been an exciting few weeks in Olathe, as we look about, think about the accomplishments of our fall sports season, so I just wanted to take a minute to share some of these highlights with you tonight. You probably have seen many of them on social and other places, but let's start with girls tennis. Olathe Northwest finished fourth as a state, boy, that's hard. Olathe, this is my prep for my speech tomorrow morning, you'll see how it's going to go. Olathe Northwest finished fourth at state as a team, their highest team finish in school history, so awesome stuff for them. Girls golf, three Olathe schools finished in the top six at the state tournament, fourth place, Olathe East, fifth place, Olathe Northwest, sixth place, Olathe West. Gymnastics, big time in gymnastics this year. Olathe North won first as a team at state, Olathe West won second as a team at state, and Ella Margheim from Olathe North took first in all four events and the all-around, so great job for her. Volleyball, Olathe Northwest finished third as a team at the state tournament. Cross country, Olathe South boys won state as a team, their first state, their first state title in school history, so congratulations to them. Olathe West girls won state as a team for the second year in a row. They went undefeated this season and will return all six runners from this year's team.
Wow.
So good things to come from them for sure. Angelie Hawkersing from Olathe North won the individual state title in cross country for the second year in a row. Boys soccer, Olathe West has advanced to the final four of the state tournament, which will take place at Seaback this weekend. Football, four high schools have advanced past the first round of the playoffs and will compete in regional playoffs this Friday. Olathe West hosts Shawnee Mission Northwest, Olathe North hosts Olathe Northwest, and Olathe South travels to Blue Valley Northwest. So just a tremendous fall for all of our sports programs in Olathe, and really proud of our students and staff for making that happen. The other quick thing I wanted to mention tonight, of course, is our fall breakfast tomorrow, which marks a 25th year celebration for our foundation, and man, have they done a lot for our school district in the last 25 years, so I'm excited to celebrate them and all of their accomplishments tomorrow. The last thing I'd like to mention tonight is a word of thanks to this incredible leadership team that you see sitting in front of you. You know, one of the things I'll share tomorrow night, or tomorrow morning, is just the size and the magnitude of our district, and the amount of moving parts with almost 30,000 kids, 6,000 different people on our payroll doing a variety of things. The amount of moving parts with that, the amount of moving parts that that creates in a system is unbelievable, and these folks that are here in the senior team tonight, these folks work many time 12- and 14-hour days to get it done for our students and our staff, and, you know, I took a picture of a lot of these people the other day and said, "A group that I truly appreciate and that I love," and it's true. I'm so proud to work with each of these people every day, and I will say very easily, they don't get the respect that they deserve, because many times, jobs that they're all in are jobs that are behind the scenes, so everybody else can do their jobs. So I just wanted to take a minute to say, you guys are awesome, and I appreciate you, and man, I'm glad you're here. That's all.
All right, and this meeting is adjourned.